Good evening. It is six thirty P M. Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for the evening to bring the Golden Girls to front and center before the consent agenda.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. I think the ladies have somewhere else to be tonight, so we'll move forward on recognizing the Golden Girls for being named Division Three Team State Champions. Go ahead.
Resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-two. Resolution congratulating the Carney High School Golden Girls team members, head coach Samantha Anderson, and assistants on their accomplishments and achievements from school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Carney High School Golden Girls participated in many events, school functions, and tournaments across the state and the United States, and whereas such achievement requires physical dedication and year-round time devoted to conditioning and training, along with outstanding dance ability by this group of student dancers. And whereas the Carney High School Golden Girls participated in the Kansas City Classic in Liberty, placing second in Palm, second in Jazz, second overall in their division, with Sophia Brown placing fifth in the junior category, and Ava Yark tenth in the senior category. And whereas in Union Regionals at Lee Summit, the team placed second in Palm, sixth in Jazz, placed third overall in team scoring with Ava Yark placing twelfth, and Sophia Brown third in the senior category. And at Nationals in Orlando, Florida, the team placed tenth in Large Varsity Palm and sixteenth in Large Varsity Jazz. And whereas at the Missouri State Competition held in St. Charles, Missouri, the team placed first in Jazz and first in Palm, Sophia Brown crowned state champion for juniors, and the Carney High School Golden Girls, for the first time in program history, being named Team State Champions in Division Three. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and board of aldermen, the city of Carney does hereby congratulate Carney High School Golden Girls team members Jessa Baldwin, Hallie Bell, Taya Curtis, Maddie Pennington, Eva Yark, Sophia Brown, Madeline Duncan, Chloe Ferris, Eden Ursick, Willie Liberty, Sophia Frank, Kennedy Slaughter, Aubrey Taylor, Avery Aller, Grace Daly, Ari Watkins, along with head coach Samantha Anderson and assistant Rachel Sarah, and volunteer assistant Kinsey Liberty. Passed and resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Carney, Missouri, this fourth day of April twenty twenty-two.
Board, can we entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, ladies.
Ari Watkins does not. She's the only one that.
Ready?
Oh, yeah. Great.
Yeah, that's great.
They don't have a good picture.
Great job. We don't want one with the mayor in there, too. You don't want to make their scrapbooks?
We're in the picture.
Yeah, they don't want me in their scrapbooks. Yeah.
Samantha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Would you like to say anything? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board, do you have any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? If not, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll continue to recognize some of the amazing and outstanding youth in Carney. And tonight, I'm pleased to recognize Jacques Guest for being named a twenty twenty-one national champion at the USA High School Powerlifting Competition. Eric, if you can read the proposed resolution, please?
Absolutely. Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-two. Resolution congratulating Carney High School sophomore Jacques Guest, national champion at the USA High School Powerlifting Championship. Whereas Jacques Guest, Carney High School, completed in the twenty twenty-two USA High School Powerlifting Championships. And whereas such an achievement requires complete mental and physical dedication, and year-round time devoted to nutrition, conditioning, and training. And whereas Carney High School sophomore Jacques Guest continues to qualify for the state and national championships, and continues to have dominating success by being named the twenty twenty-one national champion, twenty twenty-one best overall lifter, twenty twenty-one fifteen-and-under squat and world record, twenty twenty-one Missouri State Champion, and twenty twenty-two national champion, holding multiple state records and continuing to be a multi-sport athlete for Carney High School. And whereas Jacques Guest always displays a positive attitude and continually displays himself as a man of great character, a true role model for his peer students. And whereas becoming a state and national champion increases school pride, community-mindedness, and makes Carney extremely proud. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and board of aldermen, the city of Carney does hereby congratulate Jacques Guest for his continued success and work as a state and national powerlifting champion.
Entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Jac.
You gotta bench press the mayor.
Jacques, would you like to say anything?
Uh, no.
No problem. Next, excited to have Mr. Jim Thomas here this evening. For those of you that may or may not know that Jim works extremely hard as our treasurer for the Carney Road District. Jim requested to address the board this evening to provide some information regarding the Carney Road District, when it was formed, when it was expanded, and how much funding the district has generated for the city. We sincerely appreciate Jim and his fellow commissioners, Bill Duncan and Jerry Hearn, for all their efforts over the years. I might add that Bill Duncan has filed as a write-in candidate for his open seat for the Road District, as he didn't get word that his term was up until after registration had closed. So those three individuals have served us extremely well at that capacity. And Jim, thank you for being here. I'll give the floor to you.
Thank you for allowing me. Road District was formed or re-instituted in two thousand and eight, and I don't know if the district passed that. We quickly realized that the Road District was less than the city limits of Carney, so we worked, hit some petition signs, and on the ballot, and it was officially expanded to the city limits of Carney in two thousand and eleven. Bill Duncan, his name, please all remember tomorrow when you go to the polls. He's a great chairman, and I certainly would miss him in lieu of like Mickey Mouse or those other names people write in. But, long story short, it's a lot of fun. We meet whenever we have money in the bank. And thanks to Mr. Eldridge, he keeps finite track of that. Without him, the program would not work. So accolades to him. But year-to-date, the Carney Special Road District has funded two million, thirty thousand dollars since two thousand and eight, and we're gonna keep doing it. I have a couple rules that I prefer those repairs or those funds are spent in the neighborhood as opposed to on business. I used to tell Bill Dane, and he asked me to serve on this, and as you well know, difficult to tell Bill no, if not impossible. But I told him two roads I would never approve. One is North Country, where my business was, and the other was Shawna Drive, where Billy used to live on Shawna. With that, thank you very much for the opportunities. When I get you up to date, I realize that some of you may not know how much money we plug back into the city budget. We're pleased to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next, enter mayor's remarks. I want to announce, for those of you that may or may not know, that Carney has been selected by Fox Four for a Fox Four zip trip on Friday, June third. We will be the first community showcased. Jerry Spencer has graciously accepted the role of leading this welcoming program for June third, and I will let Jerry... I'll give you the floor, Alderman Spencer, and let you share some information about this exciting news.
It is very exciting, and like Randy said, we will be the first of thirteen communities to be featured for a zip trip for the twenty twenty-two summer season for Channel Four. The last time we had a live zip trip here in Carney was two thousand and six. So this is a great opportunity for us to showcase our city again and all we have to offer. The date of the live show will be Friday, June third, from seven A M. to ten A M. The home base for the TV channel will be at the corner of Washington and Jefferson at the Carney Historic Museum. The water fountain, the heart from the parade of hearts, and City Hall will be part of the backdrop for them for that morning. They want to highlight a few of the must-seeds in our community. And hear a bit about our history. We think that this will definitely encourage and bring tourism to Carney and give people a reason to spend a full day, maybe even a weekend here. We're very excited about that. Randy and I collaborated on our suggestions for Channel Four, and we believe that we have compiled a list of fabulous things for them to choose from. I encourage everyone to stop by that morning. Again, that is June third from seven A M. seven A M. to ten A M. And watch the live show in progress out here. Should be fun.
Thank you. Next, enter mayor's remarks. I want to announce that Congressman Graves will join us for our I thirty-five interchange groundbreaking, eleven A M. Tuesday, April twelfth, at the Carney Water Tower off Watson Drive. Extremely honored and pleased that Congressman Graves is gonna be able to join us for that event. He's been an amazing representative, been amazing for Carney, and looking forward to that groundbreaking ceremony with Mo-Dob. So the city, many boards and individuals, long before this board, has worked extremely hard for this day, and we welcome everybody to be there to kick off this exciting improvement. That concludes my mayor's remarks. Move on to administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, at eight twenty, I and Eric Marshall are gonna be rooting for K U, and Kurt, don't talk too long. That concludes my report.
Eric, your mom's laughing. We'll move on to public request and petitions. We have a couple items to discuss this evening for public request and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, Harry Patel was supposed to be here, but we have Prog who is... that can stand in for him, or can you get him on the phone?
Um, I talked to him, but he has a meeting also over there in Oklahoma City, so he cannot make it.
Mr. Mayor, the motel owners in Carney are requesting that ARPA funds be used as financial aid to help them overcome serious financial losses during COVID. Congress specifically permits funds to be expended on the tourism industry. And while we have given serious consideration to this request, we're uncomfortable as a staff making recommendations to the board to provide substantial funding to one sector of the businesses. We believe that investing in our public infrastructure aids better... will better serve all of our taxpaying population. We're fortunate to have you, all of you in our community, though, Prog. And we would welcome you to come and make some remarks and explain the situation that you're in.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, feel free, Prog, to come forward and...
Only things I'm just saying that, thank you for inviting us also. In the last couple, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, we have four hotels at TS, and that's hotel industries. Everybody knows that. What happened with the hotel industries and restaurant business, especially that's a two-business. It's a fact from the COVID twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and a partial of the twenty twenty-one. So, and other things, we... Harry built it almost, what, eleven million dollars hotel at TS in Carney? So we are investing a lot of money. We are putting our money risk at TS, too, on the city of Carney. And I've been at TS for twenty years. So Jim knows that me, maybe in two thousand and three, two thousand and five, you know, Shirley knows me from the beginning. Everybody knows me from the beginning. So I'm just requesting, I mean, I understand about that, whatever it's a public fund is from the government. It's coming down at TS, right? Just, I'm not putting any dollar amount on it right now, but you guys be consider anything about to help us our hotel business. If you can do it, that'd be great. If it's not, still, we are here to serve, to the Carney, anywhere.
Prog, I was under the impression that Harry was gonna prepare some financial statements or some information to indicate your guys' losses, so the board could examine that.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
And if that could be prepared and brought forward, I think they could give you a more fair hearing on the matter.
That is fine. We can do that ones, which is no problem. We can give you all the, our financial support. If you want my personal, I can give you my personal, too.
We want very simple information. I don't think we want your financials to lay across.
We can give it to you.
It's only what you're uncomfortable, you're comfortable with making public. But Harry had indicated you guys were willing to do something.
Yeah, we can do that ones. I can send it. Maybe I can meet it with Harry tomorrow and make a, prepare all the documents, whatever you need it. We can show every single thing, any books. We are not hiding anything. If you want to put it on public, we don't care.
Has staff... are any of our peer cities or neighboring cities providing any similar relief to...
We've asked for that, too. And we know the city of Omaha has done it. We know back east, there's large, large either counties or... Platte County has been stepped forward, but I don't know of any cities, especially any cities our size that have done it anywhere. And I would always welcome that as well. But I think even you guys had, the city of Des Moines might even have done that. So, but, so the large cities have recognized that. And I just, I haven't found any that is our size that have allocated funds to their motels. So that's...
We can.
I can work on that a little more, but I don't know of any.
I can find out about which city is providing what kind of help or anything. We can provide that ones, too. We can...
Especially if they have a comparably sized city.
Yep. Yeah, we can do that ones also. I'm not comparing ourselves from the Overland Park. I'm not comparing ourselves from the...
Well, even Overland Park would be smaller than Omaha.
Or somebody else. But we are a small community. We are, we are just like a family, I would say that. You know, you know, wherever I'm just go, any business at TS, everybody knows me. Everybody, I knows everyone. So, so that's what I was feeling about that. We are a family. I mean, if something's happen any times on a city, or some tragic happen or something, you guys come and help, or ask me about the help. Hey, Prog or Harry, give me a room for ten people or ten rooms. We always welcome that ones, too, because we feel that. We feel that. We are doing business. We are living at TS, and we spend some money at TS, too. So that's what, you know, family and family can help each other. That's what I was thinking, you know? And just like I said, Jim, I will provide you all the financial information for whatever you want.
Can return it at the upcoming meeting?
Yes. Any questions or...
I mean, if you guys want anything, I can, yes, for all board members.
I think what Jim asked for is perfect if you can find any other communities within our population that have done something. That would be wonderful.
As I said, I'm not putting any dollar amount. Just like, whatever. I mean, if you're gonna give us a one dollar, we're gonna think that, okay, yes, we are together.
So, most of the cities, they do something like a dollar amount per door?
Per room or something like that, yeah. Just like, okay, if Harry has a seventy-five rooms, right, and I have a forty-four rooms. So if you're gonna give me a five thousand dollars, and Harry got the five thousand dollars, so we are comparing off apple and orange, because he has a higher room count, and mine is a lower room count. His loss is more than me, and my loss is more than other ones. So that's why, I mean, just think about that. We can have our schedules. We can have a meeting. I can give you all the reports. Then we're gonna think about what you guys can do, or what I can do together. Right now, it's no doubt about that. Right now, it's getting better. Yes, it's traveling. The people is traveling. It's getting better and better. But last two years, it's broke us. We are not gonna come out next five years. We know that. We know that. The way the COVID is of two years, yes, we are not gonna come out from our losses from the next five years. So, again, thank you for inviting us.
And you'll work with staff, Prog, Mr. Patel, and we'll get you back in a future meeting once you have some information that we can analyze and review.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We have another item under public request and petition this evening?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Kurt Hamilton here is here with the Carney Enrichment Council, seeking an increase in annual recurring contractual amount with the city funds in order to provide staff benefits, primarily for health insurance. The city contracts are silent on relative to staffing, and other than the executive director that's mentioned in the contract. Assuming the funding commitment is directly tied to benefits and not to services, it makes it difficult for us to make a contract amendment. K E C's initial request was for thirty thousand. We proposed fifteen thousand. Any decision would need to be incorporated into a contract amendment, so it can't really happen tonight. But, you know, and also a budget amendment. Our budget required a substantial pairing, as you know, Mayor, to get where we are today, and we still have some funding, our funding items that we're using surplus revenue from prior years in this current budget. And so, anyway, we're inviting you up there with that caveat.
Sounds like I only have a couple hours, so. Better jump right into this.
You're misreading the time.
I as well would probably like to watch the game tonight. So, thank you for having me again up here. I saw a lot of you this weekend at our bicentennial event, which was a lot of fun, and another exciting event that we got to do right here in our town and community, thanks to some of your funding as well that we put into it, along with some of our business and individuals' funds. So that'll be a small part of it. But, you know, I wanted to walk us through a little bit of a presentation that I prepared, just to say why that the K E C is asking for this annual request. And Ryan's gonna help me along the way, which we greatly appreciate. So before we even start, though, that's that cover photo, if you see, that is a picture actually from the Legends Festival this weekend. So you can see a drone picture of just kind of, that was taken about five or six o'clock when some of the kids' activity was done, but pretty neat to still see our small town put on such a cool event. But, next slide, please, Ryan. So the first thing I want to share is just a little bit about our history. I know some of you know a little bit of this, but just to recap, so two thousand and nine was when the original blueprints were kind of drawn up for the idea of what can we do with this vacant building that was going in downtown? And how could we repurpose this idea? And how could we bring something unique to our town and community? Moving into two thousand and eleven, we transformed that idea of a blueprint into an actual five oh one C three organization that is formed for the whole purpose of enriching the lives of Carney citizens. Twenty thirteen and fourteen, we add youth and senior programming, thanks to some grants from our county and our city, to start the idea of how we can do more than just be a building. Transitioning into the timeline when I have been the executive director, twenty twenty was a milestone for our organization, when we helped the Carney Food Pantry split into their own five oh one C three organization. And they stand on their own two feet in a building that they're proud to say that they purchased outright and they own, along with a wonderful sustainability plan with an amazing executive director. Moving on to twenty twenty-one, we start our emergency rent assistance program, where we've been able to help wonderful amount of citizens, not only in our own community, but also Clay County as a whole. And it's something that I'll talk about later, but it's something that is very unique that Carney was selected to have. And then now present, we recently added Carney Shop with a Cop, as you're well aware of. And we've already worked with some of the officers how we can make that bigger and better. We're proud to say that we've almost sold all of our sponsorships already for our golf tournament, and that's after about a week or two of just asking for those requests. So it's a pretty great timeline, and we're excited to see what else kind of gets added to it. Next slide, please. I've kind of split the K E C up into what I call the five areas of focus. Sometimes people don't necessarily know all the different things that are included under our umbrella. This kind of was a way that made it a little bit easier so people could see some of the things that we focus on and some of what's in those. So starting with, obviously, the Firehouse Community Center, where our youth programming is based, along with a rental service for our community to have birthday parties and showers, also being a community amenity right next to our Lions Park splash pad. Now being in the Carney Senior Center, leading the programming that's happening over there, not only in exercise, but adding new ones as our senior dance programming, having over fifty... having over 50 or 60 seniors dancing on our Tuesdays now, a wonderful thing to see. Uh, emergency services with our emergency rent assistance program, where we've been able to spend over 1.1 million dollars in Clay County to make sure that people are staying in their homes because of the pandemic. Downtown revitalization, which is something that we saw this weekend, where we're able to put on festivals and events, along with make sure that our local businesses are well taken care of, with businesses even selling out when we do some of these events. And then now doing Carney Shop With A Cop and making sure that we're building those wonderful partnerships between our local law enforcement and also kids that are at need in our community. Next slide please. So these are our goals that we set for ourselves as an organization in 2022. The first being a legacy donor program, something that we could increase our individual donations to make sure that our community members knew exactly what we were doing and a chance for people and individuals to be able to sponsor almost us as individuals in a different way. Moving into senior programming expansion, we used to have all of our senior programming in the Carney Firehouse Community Center. It's pretty hard to fit 60 to 70 people in the building at the same time. So we asked if we could partner with the Carney Community Foundation to put programming in a new building that was focused on seniors alone, and that program is going really well. Um, by the end of the year, we have talks of combining operations so that all senior programming will come under the KEC umbrella and we will help with Meals on Wheels and also the nutrition program, which is really exciting. Youth summer camps, developing a model with seeing the need of what our community wants with more youth. We had over 88 students come to our camps last year, breaking that down into maybe a six camp model next year for 2023, to be able to expand that offering, to offer more jobs and opportunities for people in the summer and students, but also to offer more camps for our kids that are desperately looking for new things to do during the summer. Hiring a volunteer coordinator, as we add new events, we add new stress on our staff and people. So having this new position was something that we thought was crucial and we were lucky to have her even in the building tonight, along with some of our other staff and board members. So hiring great people is part of what we need to be able to continue all the wonderful things that we do for our town. Um, you can see the big reason why I'm up here tonight, which is benefits for some of our employees. Uh, we have now four full-time employees and 16 part-time employees. With this number of people, this is a lot of people that not necessarily need fiscal recognition for what they're doing, but we also believe that we need to offer benefits to stay competitive. So that way we keep them with the positions that we have them. Nonprofits are known for using our employees more than the 40-hour work week, as a lot of us all worked this weekend for volunteerism for our community. And for that, we think that they should be rewarded for their efforts, where they're able to have healthcare access. The last part is, we have a wonderful donor that has offered to put up money for a capital campaign project. That is something where we've developed a strategic planning process with some of our past and present board members to be able to start the talks of what do we do next with maybe another space to add on to the Carney Firehouse addition with the Carney Senior Center. So as we continue to grow drastically, as we have for the last three years, this is the next step for us and we're really excited about this. So this is just some of our goals. In our next slide, you can see the financial breakdown of how our income was broken up in 2021. The city generously supported us in 38% capacity. And you can see that we also had individuals, businesses, the county, and some rental income to kind of break down some of the other ways that we make up some of our revenue. In the next slide, actually, in 2022's forecast, you can see that the city is only 30% of our overall budget, as we are willing to increase our individual donations, along with our business donations, along with our county donations. So we believe that this is part of why we're here, asking for some of the revenue. As we increase our individual, business, and county revenue strands, we also think that it could be fair to come to the city and say, we need more support so we can be able to do some of the new and the exciting things that we're doing. On the next slide, we talk about our emergency rental assistance program. This was something that I didn't put in the breakdown. So the budget that you saw earlier was not including the admin funds, along with the programming funds that we get. So in 2021, we were awarded $40,000 for programming and basically the way where we could hire staff with that, and then the 830,000, excuse me, is for the actual programming. So that was the amount of money that we spent helping people pay their rent, pay their utilities. A lot of that going to our city of Carney, but also going to our partners in the city of Excelsior and Smithville, along with Liberty and Gladstone. 2022, we've been awarded 70,000 of admin funds. That way we can help with more capacity, along with getting an extra 1.1 million of program funds. So the trust level of, they trusted three nonprofits out of the five, and Carney was selected to be one of them again, based off of our track record of how well we spent county funding in the first round of it. So I wanted to make sure that we separated those. As we move on, this is a breakdown of kind of what other communities spend on community betterment. You can see that the city of Smithville, um, these are estimates pulled from cities' annual reports and also budget lines. You can see the city of Smithville spending about $75,000 for community betterment, getting an organization that focuses on their downtown, which is wonderful, but only putting about five to 10 programs really into action with that downtown organization. City of Excelsior Springs, on the other hand, is putting a lot of money into their community betterment. Uh, Longswood has a wonderful downtown, um, partnership with the Excelsior Downtown Partnership. They do a wonderful job. We, uh, have great relationships with them and we bounce ideas off of one another. And they have a lot of programs because of the amount of funding that they're receiving. And then you can see Carney at the end, this is about the amount that we're putting towards community betterment, along with your downtown organization being the Carney Enrichment Council. And you're getting almost, I'm proud to say, a lot of the same programs that Excelsior is sharing as well, and spending about half the amount of funds. But this is also why we're here again tonight. On the next slide, you can see kind of the different funding levels of where the other communities are spending their dollars. So you can see that, you know, Smithville is putting it towards their Main Street and Neighborhood Beautification Act, along with their senior center. Uh, Excelsior putting a lot of their funds towards their community center and transportation activities. And then a category is they just call community development. And then you can see where the city of Carney is investing in, the Carney Enrichment Council, the Carney Area Development Council, and also our Carney Chamber of Commerce. So I thought this chart was important just to see. On the next one, nope, you're fine, Ryan. On the next one, you can see that this is a chart that I pulled from Smithville's annual budget. This shows that the population size of each of our communities is relatively the same. And you can see that Carney is proud to say that we have the highest 2021 assessed value. Along with, you can see how Excelsior Springs has a lower value and maybe why they're pouring funds more into that community betterment. But I thought this slide was important and it was something that kind of showed me that, you know, Carney is doing a great job, not only with its assessed value, but we're investing in our property as well, along with the partnerships that you've chosen before even my time at the KEC. And we're receiving a lot of benefit with that, with the valuation of our whole community as a whole. On the next slide, we talk about what is an average week here at the Carney Enrichment Council. So you can see in orange, that is when we use the Carney Firehouse building for rentals for our community. We open our doors for other people to have birthday parties and bridal showers. Uh, purple, that was the Legends Festival, so we use purple to indicate our events. You can see on our calendar, actually on our website, you can actually download this, so it can be mirrored to your calendar. Everything in green is, you can see all the amazing work that Kathy, Angela, Shelley, Diana, Marnie, and others put into for our Carney Senior Center. We're proud to say that, you know, the city sponsors the KEC in a variety of ways, but we don't, as a community, you know, we don't put those dollars towards the senior center. We raise money through Clay County Senior Services, along with outside funding sources, unlike some of our community partners. And the blue is our youth programming. So you can also see some of those are in light green. Those are programs that don't even fit within the senior center, because we have so much programming going over there that we still have some going on in the Firehouse Community Center. So it's great, but that's what an average day and week looks like for the Firehouse. We never get a break. We work every day, uh, including holidays, because people still will always rent and use the building. The, the next slide that I have for you, and towards the end, so don't worry, we're getting close to basketball. Um, so the 2021 recap, this was a great slide that our youth and community coordinator, Nikki Snyder, who's also here with us, uh, provided for us. Um, this is a little bit of a highlight reel to show kind of what we were able to do with the different funding mechanisms that we had. We spent 830,000 of ERUP dollars in Clay County. We provided 5,000 visits for seniors at the senior center, and that was before we were in the senior center doors, reminder. A thousand visits for youth, including our Spark Studios program and our summer camp programs. An event attendance of over 30,000, when you had a 9,000 attendance in only 2020, and about 7,000, 8,000 in years before the pandemics. Along with adding Carney Shop With A Cop program and all of its projected growth, we've been able to do a lot of exciting things. And this is why we're standing up here today, asking for the city's generous support to continue to support us, so we can continue to support you and all the different endeavors and things that we have going on. I think that's my last slide. Any questions that I could answer?
When you say benefits for your staff, explain what kind of benefits you're wanting.
We have used a broker that is a nonprofit specialist that is quoting benefits for healthcare, dental, and then also retirement. Those are the three that we feel comfortable doing. The 20,000, as Jim shared, the 30,000 was the original ask, and that was the amount that it would cost to have the four full-time employees on benefits. So the 20,000 would cover two, and it would put the KEC in another situation where we'd have to fundraise for the last 10. The reason why I asked for the full 30,000 was because the Carney Enrichment Council also took on a $25,000 budget shortfall to hire new staff this year, with the anticipation of the legacy donor tree carrying the weight of that burden, which is doing a wonderful job, I would say, of helping us carry that short-term benefit. But we need the city's support to make sure that we are able to have these benefits, uh, because these are things that are crucial. I've served as your executive director proudly since November of 2019, and I've done that without benefits. Uh, before that, I came to Carney in May of 2019 without benefits. I'm 27 years old, I'll be 28. Uh, I'm afraid of my wife if I go back without benefits. Uh, if we, I can say that publicly, um, I got permission. Uh, but at, at the end of the day, it's something that, it's an expectation that I no longer can take. And it's something that it's putting my own personal track, along with others in our staff, in a position that is a little too uncomfortable, where we don't want to lose good people, because we know how hard it is to find them.
Yes. Any other questions from the board? No? All right. Uh, Kurt, uh, thank you for being here this evening. Uh, thank you for, uh, all your staff, uh, board members for being here this evening. We'll take this center advisement. Um, do we wanna, do we entertain a motion to, uh, schedule a further meeting or?
Yeah, we gotta have a further meeting, we gotta look at a, at a budget. We don't have a budget item for this. I mean, this is, this is a different deal. We're gonna have to figure out where, if we have money, if we're gonna use money, we're gonna have to find out where that money's coming from.
Understand.
And that's gonna have to be voter on, because we have to amend our budget. So I don't know what kind of motion to make tonight, but I mean, it's, it's something that.
Perhaps it's a motion to table this until we have done further research.
Can we get that done before the next meeting?
I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
It's tabled next meeting.
We entertain a motion to table the formal request of additional funding until our next regular scheduled meeting, which will be April 21st.
I make a motion to table this until our next meeting, April 21st, for further consideration.
I'm sorry. Yeah, 18th, I'm sorry.
April 18th.
Yeah, Monday, April 18th.
Oh, second to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those? We will see you Monday, April 18th.
Sounds good, thank you for it.
Well, thank you. Kurt, one thing, i- is it just for the four?
Correct.
You and Shelley and?
It would be myself, Nikki Snyder, Jill Clay, and Andrew Vaughn.
Okay. Okay.
Could you provide, uh, maybe the, the benefit detail?
Yep. I did, I will say I did provide the benefit breakdown to Jim and also Randy. So I do have that information already prepared, so I can share that rather quickly.
Okay.
Great, thanks Kurt.
Thanks.
We'll move on to public hearings, which we have none this evening. No old business to discuss and new, new business to discuss. We do have a previously, uh, posted executive session, uh, this evening. So in accordance with RS MO 610021, the board may go into a closed session during this meeting to discuss matters of litigation, legal actions, and/or communication from the city attorney, as provided under section 610021 subsection 1, subsection 2, and subsection 3. Can the board consider a motion to go into executive session at 7:14?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the board?
Oliverman Spencer?
Aye.
Oliverman Hall?
Aye.
Oliverman Lehman?
Aye.
Oliverman Barker?
Aye.
Motion unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
All right, as soon as we adjourn executive session, we'll return to the public format to finish the meeting.
We adjourn the executive session at 7:57. We move on to the next item of discussion under tonight's agenda, Alderman Discussion. Alderman Barker?
I have nothing for this evening other than to encourage everyone to vote.
Alderman Lehman?
I have nothing.
Alderman Holt?
I have concerns again. We had a festival downtown and the gates were shut and locked with a parking place that we bought for the whole purpose of parking downtown.
Yes, I saw that.
Sorry. That's a pet peeve of mine.
All right. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Was it needed?
Yeah, they were parked all of them down the streets because they didn't have anywhere to park. And we need to get a sign that says public parking and let them know they can park there.
We'll communicate that with Kurt too. Alderman Spencer?
I just want to say that I thought the festival went very well. It was well attended when I was here and it was really neat to see all of the costume people up and down the streets. All of it was fabulous. The museum was busy. There were a lot of people in and out. It was good.
That's great. Great Saturday in Kearney for sure.
The weather was fabulous.
Could have been perfect. So thank you Alderman Spencer and Kurt with the KEC and all the volunteers that helped put that on and the rest of the board members for the support for funding that. So with that, do we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.